Good evening, we want to welcome each of you to our budget public hearing this evening. We appreciate those of you who are in our audience and those who are viewing us by way of television. I call this meeting to order and we shall now have our roll call. We shall have our invocation and pledge. Commissioner McGlaughlin will lead our invocation and Commissioner Coulson will lead us in our pledge. Let's stand, please.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come this day to ask Thy blessing upon this meeting. Bless these people. Help us to partake in this meeting and be of such great knowledge that You give us to control this budget for the benefit of citizens of Pitt County. Bless us now and forever. In Thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Place flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the agenda before you. Do I have a motion that we approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, thank you. We shall now have an overview of our 2013-2014 proposed budget by our manager, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. If you'll allow me, I'll get to the podium like a presentation for you.
Okay.
Tonight is the public hearing for the county's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2013-2014. This follows a long process that began the first of the year of department heads submitting their requests and going through budget conferences with myself and Dwayne Holder, the deputy county manager for Chief Financial Officer, and then obviously the workshops that were held with you as the board in the month of May. Before you are three documents. One is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that will be shown on the screen to the viewing audience. Second thing is the actual written budget message. It's more of the written statement as to what the budget encompasses. And the third is the legal document that once you make, if you decide to adopt the budget tonight, that makes the budget legal. That's called the budget ordinance. And there are two different versions of the budget ordinance. You only have one in front of you, but the one in front of you has the provision for the county to gain membership to the chambers of commerce in the county, as was discussed in the budget workshops. We do have an alternate budget ordinance prepared that does not include that. So at the end, depending upon what direction you want to give staff, it'll depend which one you decide to adopt. In terms of the overall budget, move into the PowerPoint presentation. The board's priorities, these are well-known to the board, education, community safety, economic development, health and welfare, facility and space needs, infrastructure improvements, and recreational activities. These are the priorities or the goals that are kind of benchmarks in which the budget is prepared against in terms of looking to allocate funding, whether it's where the funding is scarce, whether we're eliminating programs and services, whether we're adding to them. These priorities are used to make that analysis. In terms of the actual process, the July 1 budget, beginning the new fiscal year, the July 1, 2013 through June 30 of 2014, was taken into account based upon several factors or considerations. One being what we called last year, when I stood before you, we created the new base budget from the current year, and that base budget basically means we'll live within our means, we will have our expenditures meet our revenues, or actually, we will hope that our, to have, like we've done this year, our expenditures will run below our revenues so that we have a surplus at the end of the year. Builds upon the concept of structural balance that we've talked about, again, meaning expenditures should be covered by current revenues. Other things to think about in the process were that this budget does reflect some economic recovery in terms of reoccurring dollars and one-time dollars. Utilizes the growth in the tax base, again, for those reoccurring one-time revenues. Includes new money from the ABC board, taking that appropriation from, or distribution from 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars. In terms of budget drivers, there's minimal service expansion based upon reoccurring revenues. There's limited investment earnings. I believe we put in here $75,000 for investment earnings for next year. Compared to five years ago, it was $1.8 million, close to two pennies on a tax rate, but that's the current environment we are in, unfortunately. Includes the tax and tag together program, which is the one-time revenues based upon the combined motor vehicle renewal and paying your taxes on your motor vehicles that will be a one-stop process with the local DMV office across the state, including Pitt County. Includes some state mandated increases in retirement for employees, as well as the 1% unemployment insurance reserve the state is requiring to be set up so that they make sure that fund is solvent. Also continues the business personal property audit process. In terms of all funds in the budget, as we compare the current year 1213 of $202,376,910 to the proposed budget of $211,365,509, that is a 4.44% change within all funds of the budget. We'll talk about the general fund, how it differentiates here in just a moment, which you've heard me speak about in the past. This slide here gives you a overview of what we call general government. And this slide is what we've used in the past for many, many, many years to talk about general government in terms of the $100 million portion of the budget being the general government part, and this is what was reflected to you at the budget workshops. Shows the original department request of $111,861,831. You see, it took reductions of almost $2 million, came down to a proposed preliminary budget of $109, almost $110 million. You can see the revenues there match that. Does include the $2 million of fund balance as our plug, which we count on not falling back. We don't spend that plug, just as we are not in current year. And you remember that years past, we used to plug it with $4.5 to $5 million of fund balance for savings. We've stopped that practice because we were spending a good $2, $3 million of that plug. So we've got the plug now, just so it will, we only plug as much as we expect to fall back so that we're not dipping into fund balance, and we see a positive direction where fund balance is increasing and not decreasing. The current year's budget for the year we're in, for 1213, is $104,523,315 as adopted. Percent change within the general fund is 5.12%. Just please keep in mind that $1.4 million of the expenditures are non-recurring projects and they are from one-time revenues. If we were to take those out, we would only have a 3.49% change in those expenditures that are reoccurring year to year to year, if we didn't have the one-time funds to utilize. The next slide, the next two slides kind of go together, and please follow me in what I'm going to present. We are trying to adjust or change our presentation of the funds so what we present to you matches what is in your annual audit. So the next slide shows the general fund. Technically, the general fund is made up of the following five categories, that being general government, public health, social services, court facility fees, and mental health. That totals $149,781,122. Nothing has changed from the budget workshops, just the presentation format of how we're showing this shows how it would reflect in the actual audit. And in talking to Dwayne, we would like to start presenting this this way in the future. So going to the next slide, so if we're looking at a general fund overview, if we were to look at it from this point of view, the original department request, $153 million, reductions $3.4 million, preliminary budget $149 million, revenues coming in $149 million compared to the current year budget, $143,376, would show a percent change of 4.47. If this confuses you, just go back to the original, that first slide where I had the general government overview of $111 million. But in essence, we're trying to move so that the numbers we present to you reflect how you're going to see them in the audit. Nothing has changed in the dollars in terms of any of the appropriations within any of the departments, it's just how it's sliced and diced. We want to start shifting to this presentation format so that everything matches within the presentation format between budget development, budget execution, and then the audit process at the end of the day. In terms of proposed fee changes, we have two areas, animal shelter and inspections/permitting. With the animal shelter, the Animal Control Advisory Board is recommending a fee increase. This is for municipalities to increase from $10 to $20. They have charged $20, $10 for probably 20 or 30 years, never taking into account the increased costs for putting animals down, caring for animals, the different types of shots they give for them, if they're actually adoptable animals. And this is a fee that's been discussed, I would almost say, at length. We've met with the municipalities, we've written the municipalities, we've followed up with them at our bimonthly managers' meeting that we hold with them, and they'll understand this. I think for Greenville, that has the largest impact, they go from a fee impact of $9,000 to $18,000, and then it's smaller for the other municipalities. I've been told by Michelle Whaley that some of the municipalities are just passing this fee on to the citizens. As they go out and collect an animal, they charge, they're starting to charge the $20 fee so that it'll be a wash for them in the end. Within inspections and permitting, these fees, proposed fee increases remain as presented in the budget workshops. In terms of the residential permit fees, which this slide here shows, for building permit renovations, they're showing that minor renovations consisting of three or four, three or four trade permits will be charged $100 permit for electrical permits, for solar equipment, which we've never had until we've just amended the ordinance to, well, actually, the amendment to the ordinance was to allow solar operations, but this is for residential. The current fee is $200 plus $5 per sale. Proposed fee is to go to $100 plus 50 cents per panel. Otherwise, there is a demolition permit fee being proposed, $100, and there is a permit modification or change of contractor fee being proposed at $50. The next slide deals with non-residential permit fees. This gets more back to how you change the ordinance to allow solar farms and solar operations in the county. Because you've never allowed them in the past, but now they are allowed, and you just approved one your last meeting, the proposed fee would be $200 plus 50 cents per panel for solar equipment. So the resounding request you approved and considered, once I get ready to execute it and actually put the panels on the ground, would be subject to this fee. Also for non-residential fees, it's being proposed for a $200 demolition permit fee. Terms of revenue review and highlights, this pie chart breaks out the county's revenue sources, ad-volume taxes obviously being the largest source at almost 51%, second being intergovernmental, and then otherwise, you have other taxes, permit fees, sales and service, interest earnings, miscellaneous, and fund balance appropriated. You can see the total budget of all funds, again, is $211,365,509 as broken out within the table. In terms of the ad-volume tax rate for next year, it is being proposed to remain constant at 68 cents with no increase in rate. The distribution would be .673 to the general fund, the .007, or seven tenths of a penny, would go to the industrial development fund for the operations of the development commission. The collection percentage is based upon 97%, which is based upon fiscal year 1112, which is our last complete full year of collection. And we're showing a value increase of $630,66,191, which is a 5.58% increase. But keep in mind, of that $630 million, 50% of that is the one-time tax and tag revenues that we will receive next year, just that one time, because we have five months of double collection. So technically, we probably have more real reoccurring growth, about $315 million. Terms of expenditure review and highlights, this table here shows you that, in terms of your highest percentage, and I'm happy to say that education comes out at 25.40% as your highest, and then your second highest being human services, that'd be your mental health, health and DSS, then public safety, general government, and otherwise as allocated. Again, for a total budget of $211,365,509. Terms of expenditures by fund, this gets back to this reporting format that I was explaining earlier, the general fund showing at the $149 million total, almost 150, and breaking out all the way down to the Leo Fund or the Law Enforcement Officers Fund, School Capital Reserve, Article 46, which is the quarter cent sales tax, State Grants Fund, the PATH System Fund, Industrial Development, Fire and EMS, Emergency Telephone System Fund, which is your 911 surcharge, your debt service fund, School Improvement Fund, Solid Waste, County Garage, Employee Retirements Medical Insurance, and Workers' Comp. This lays it out like we've never done in the past, and I think it's more clear to see how it's all laid out by fund like this compared to how we've laid it out in the past. In terms of education funding for Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College, we have for the county school system, that we are currently in the 42nd position out of 100 in terms of what they call the PPE, per pupil expenditure. In terms of the school system funding request, they had requested a total of $35,826,287 comprised of the three categories above it, the $34,340 and the $750,000. I'm pleased to report to you, just like I reported, recommended in the budget workshops, we're recommending full funding of their request at $35,826,287. This represents an increase of $731,561 or a 2.15% increase. Pitt County Schools, the bar chart here shows, going back to '04-'05, the progressive nature in which the county's appropriations have been made. You can see since probably 2008, 2009, there's been a flattening of the increase in expenditures. But I think we should be proud to say that even during the great recession that we've had, we have maintained and slightly increased over time, dipped in a couple of years there, but we're back up to the highest allocation of current expense dollars that we've had. And if I can get some assistance from the FBI office, we've lost our PowerPoint. Or I've clicked the wrong button, one or two. In terms of Pitt Community College, I'll go ahead and talk as this is, in terms of Pitt Community College, they are requesting $5,170,000, $5,173.26. And again, I'm proud to say that with your input, they're being fully funded, the total $5,173.26. Let me catch up here. Going back to Pitt County Schools real quick, on the per pupil expenditure, I want to point this out before I address PCC, the Community College. This table here shows, going back to 2006, the ADM is your average daily membership, the number of students in the school system. You can see it's a 2014, $23,845. Now, the PPE is to be determined, and then you can see our rank is to be determined, depending upon what the all, the remaining 99 counties, what they appropriate will determine where our rank is. All right, moving back to the Community College, again, this fully funds their request, and part of the justification for the request, they were trying to restore some of the budget cuts from the, where we were a year ago, going through this process. They were trying to recoup or trying to account for some energy cost expenses, facility repairs and renovations, and also salary increase, spending two fiscal years, trying to make up for what the county did not appropriate last year, and then including 1.2% for the, or 1.6% for the new year. So again, fully funded, $5,170,032.6. This represents $444,454 or a 9.56% increase to Pitt Community College compared to the current expense recommendation for Pitt County Schools at 2.15%. The current expense funding appropriation for the Community College, again, showing you a bar chart going back to 2004, 2005. You can see that, again, the effects of the recession, starting in probably 2009, 2010, kind of flattened off, but now we've started going back up and increasing the appropriations. In terms of EMS and fire, in terms of their funding, the EMS budget is obviously recommended by the EMS Oversight Committee. It maintains the base rate of 4.6 cents that, yes, Mr. James, is on top of the 68 cent ad-volume tax rate that is normally pointed out in the budget workshops, in the public hearing. It increases seven of the nonprofit squads they're funding, plus two of the county squads. There's one county squad that asks for flat or less funding, and it does implement the third and final year of our vehicle replacement plan. The adopted budget for the current year is $5,183,742, which is proposed as $5,261,997. Represents a 1.51% increase in the EMS fund. The illustration before you basically shows how that total budget of $5,261,997 is broken out between the squads, between the operating expenses, the administrative expenses, the revenues that come in, and the expenditures. In terms of fire, the fire fund, there are 20 volunteer fire departments in Pitt County that service all of unincorporated Pitt County. Some are combined departments that are city and fire combined. There are five departments who are requesting a tax increase. There are three departments who are requesting a pumper and/or a new tanker. And as you remember, the county's policy is to provide $10,000 once every 20 years for a pumper, and $10,000 once every 20 years for a tanker. We keep track of that, and we do this after they make the purchase, then the county then cuts the check to the squad. So we have that funding appropriated in the proposed budget. In terms of the five departments who are asking for a increase in their rates, you've got Bell Arthur, Blackjack, Gardner Ville, State and House, and Stokes, as reflected in the chart. In terms of human resources, within the county's operating budget, there were 27.75, almost 28 requests for new positions. We're only funding five and a half of those requests. Now, a good many of these are associated with the proposed opening of E Block at the detention center. Obviously, that was delayed, being proposed to be delayed till the fiscal year 1415 budget. In terms of looking at the market adjustment or the COLA history, cost of living adjustment history for Pitt County, this goes back again to the base timeframe of 2004, 2005. You can see in the second column what the CPI was as measured January to January by the federal government, what was implemented in each year, whether it was all implemented July 1 or whether it was split between July 1 and January 1, then you can see the annualized impact. You can say, beginning with fiscal year 2009, 2010, there was, we have not been, we have not experienced a market adjustment or COLA. If no market adjustment or COLA were to be implemented in the July 1 budget, we'd be five years running. I am recommending a 2% adjustment in salaries, and as we compare back to the point in time, going back to the 2009, 2010, the total cumulative COLA is 8.7% if you did nothing this year. So technically, if the budget is adopted as presented, the net effect, we would still be 6.5% behind having not instituted COLAs in those other years. The merit compensation proposal, as you will remember, the county does have a Partners' for Effective Performance, or the PEP process, for employee reviews. And the way the PEP process works, if you made a minimum score, depending upon where you are on the pay scale, you can either get a 1.2 or a 2.4% increase. That we have not done in three years, and this will actually be the fourth year that we will have not had any appropriations for PEP increases. PEP increases are above in addition to any market adjustment or COLA. I have proposed putting in this year's budget a non-monetary plan to maybe bridges, hopefully to next year, where we're here a year from now, that we'll be able to have some merit money in the budget, and this will begin, will be based upon a PEP performance score. We've still been doing the employee evaluations all these years, even though money has not been attached to it, because employees need to know where they stand in their performance, where they stand in their projects, and just basically what they're standing is with their supervisor and the department head. The idea here is to allocate personal leave or vacation time, up to 16 hours, depending upon where they are and what their score is for this purpose. In terms of the CIP, or the Capital Improvement Plan, for next year, we have $2,756,000 worth of projects that are in the CIP, everything from the $750,000 that goes to the Pitt County Schools, Capital 1, 2, and 3 expenses, PCC's capital expenses, $75,000, economic development projects, and that funding would come out of the Development Commission funding, $257,000. The Pitt County new loan for vehicle replacement that will allow us to purchase between 25 and 30 cars, that's $615,000. Technically, though, we'll be on a three-year loan with that, and that'll be about $200,000 for the first payment, but we budget the entire amount and then work back from there. Within EMS, we, like I mentioned before, we have the third year of the Capital Truck Replacement Plan, that's $260,000. Within the Sheriff's Department, there's a series of equipment, and a lot of this is being purchased with the one-time tax and tag monies, as we're calling them, communications equipment for a radio system of $129,000, replacement of the sheriff's telephone system within the communication center, $400,000, replacement of the sheriff's NICE, which is the name of the recording system within their communication system, at $200,000, and then a much-needed backhoe in buildings and grounds, at $70,000. These are all the budgeted items for next year. The next slider or illustration shows those that were not budgeted. I won't go through all these, but you can see that we had, in terms of documented requests, $7,823,332 worth of needs that could not be accommodated within the current revenue In terms of a look forward, we always try to give you a glimpse as to where we may be a year from now, as we're talking about the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. Some of the challenges that we have identified will be with education funding, dealing with the Capital 1, 2, and 3. Right now, we are funding the $750,000 for Pitt County Schools, $75,000 for PCC. Keep in mind, 50% of that, we are utilizing Article 46, sales tax, which is the quarter cent sales tax. Next year, we would like to not utilize that, because it technically should probably be used for brick and mortar, so we would like to be able to have all of that come out of ad-volume taxes and not out of the sales tax. Detention center capacity, we are much anticipating that by July 1, we will need to be planning for opening E Block, which is the additional 96-bed pod that will take us from a capacity of 500 to close to 600. That has a price tag of $850,000, and that is reoccurring, because that is about 99.9% personnel-related in terms of manpower and associated costs. Merit pay, if we're able to institute a merit pay, we're probably looking at about $600,000 plus or minus. All that added together is about $1.9 million, just that in and of itself. If the growth in the budget through the next year, in terms of, not the budget, but the tax base, if the growth in the tax base mirrors what we've had looking a year back, we grew about $2 million in reoccurring dollars. So if we grow at the same rate, hopefully we'll grow better in the tax base than that. We'd have just enough money to cover those items. Things that are not on that list would be any increases for the school system, whether we're talking about Pitt County Schools or the Community College. At this point in time, there's no current expense dollars on that list. There's no market adjustment, further market adjustment for county employees. So those are just some of the constraints that we're looking at and challenges we'll be facing. With that, I would like to say, before I conclude, would like to give a sincere thanks to the Finance Department and With that, I would like to say before I conclude, would like to give a sincere thanks to the Finance Department and staff, especially Dwayne Holder, Shelley and Denise, all their work on the budget, to the department heads who have submitted and worked with Dwayne and myself to come to the recommendations, and it's really been a very cooperative process. I think this year has gone very, very smoothly. I'd like to thank you as the board for your input and telling us your desires of how you wanted the budget tweaked and things added or taken away. And, Mr. Chairman, with that, I...
Thank you very much for that presentation. I now declare the public hearing open. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of our budget? Anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of our budget, period? Set your name and your address, please.
Bobby Hardison, 2317 Mayfield Drive, Winterville, North Carolina. And I don't know what to say, except the budget sounds good, except that it skipped what we requested, and I didn't hear anything mentioned of that. And all we wanted was a loan so we could get our road DOT approved. And our members there, every household, has already agreed that we'd be glad to pay the money back, and we only need like $50,000. And, of course, I think the initial proposal that the other committee had asked y'all to put in was $100,000, so somebody else would probably be able to get some monies, too. Our subdivision's small, we only have 21 homes. We're all taxpayers, there's few people are disabled and retirees and so forth, but several still have full working people there. And the road actually was DOT-approved in '92, but the developer failed to send the letter in to ask DOT to take it over. I mean, I've got all the stamps and stuff that's in the tax office, but now it's worn out again, and I'm filling up the holes and fixing so we can ride over it. And we just left the bar of the money so we can fix it. But otherwise, I agree with your budget for every other aspect, sounds great to me.
Thank you very much, and I know you've been here before talking about that subject, and I know that we are working on that, and I'd like to ask our manager to address that.
Mr. Chairman, we have identified a funding source for that, and when the Street Maintenance Committee brings back their formal recommendation of how we're going to implement the program, there's really two tracks going, one is street maintenance for new subdivisions. We're also working on an internal policy of how we're going to propose to the Board of Commissioners to allow subdivisions like yours that need improvement. We've identified a funding source within the budget. We'll bring back a budget amendment with that program when we bring these two avenues back to the board. So we haven't forgotten that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other person that signed up, Evan...
Lewis.
Lewis. State your name and address, please.
My name is Evan Lewis. I live at 3402 Dunhaven Drive in Greenville, North Carolina. I am the Chief Executive Officer of Martin Community Action, Inc. Should point out that this doesn't relate to this upcoming budget, but is a matter that's going to be addressed in a vote on the 17th related to this year's budget. And it's a request from Martin Community Action for $25,000. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Ms. Gallagher, Ms. Hines, and Mr. Elliott. Martin Community Action provides family self-sufficiency and Head Start services for Pitt, Martin, and Beaufort Counties. In addition to those counties, it provides weatherization assistance in three other counties, Edgecombe, Nash, and Wilson. I started as Chief Executive Officer on March 1, 2013. On that date, I sat down and I looked at a memo from the Head Start Office that said we have a sequester of $200,000. So welcome to the job, sort of, for that date. Also found out when I took over and when my new fiscal officer, who you met recently, came on board, that we also had a sincere cash flow problem, although we have a large budget, mostly, almost entirely federal funds. One of our programs, the weatherization program, has put us on a reimbursement contract, which means that we have to expend money and then bill the state for it to get it back. Well, unfortunately, we can't use Head Start money, and we can't use self-sufficiency money to pay for the upfront cost of the weatherization program. And so that's the cash flow problem, it really is, that's the basis of it. And what we're asking related to that is, we think if we can get $10,000 to help us revolve every month to keep us square in terms of cash flow, that we can proceed forward without violating our obligations to the other programs in the federal government. And we're getting close to the point where we will be doing that unless something changes. The other part of the proposal is $15,000, and that money we view as seed money to make us self-sufficient. We run a self-sufficiency program for families so that they no longer depend on public assistance, but become employed or become small business owners. We've had more and more lately become small business owners and help the economic development of our communities. We, too, want to move towards being self-sufficient, but for the same reasons, we have cash flow problems with the weatherization program right now. We don't have money to put into social investments where we could grow our programs, replace that $200,000 the feds just took from us for fee for service, look for other sources of income like Workforce Investment Act, which is also a reimbursable program, put us in a position so we can take advantage of those opportunities and not have to come back here and ask you for further money in the future. That really is the purpose of this. That is essentially it. And mostly, I wanted to appear tonight, because I can't come on the 17th when you're going to consider this matter. I'm going to be on a flight to Atlanta to talk to the Head Start administrators that we work with, and so is my fiscal officer at that point. Actually, it's a conference about dealing with issues like the sequester and further deficiencies in federal funding we see coming up potentially. So I feel like I need to go to that. I apologize for not being there then. I hope you'll give our request every favorable consideration when it does come up for a vote, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, hold on just a minute. Madam Attorney, this is not related to our budget. This is a meeting call for our budget, but is it okay for us to go on and ask him some questions and discuss this issue so we will be prepared better for our next meeting to answer this request? Okay, fine, proceed.
Sir, I believe the last gentleman that came and spoke, if I remember correctly, Pitt County is the largest county of the group that you're talking about in what they receive for the children. Is that correct?
That's right, and all three of the programs, Pitt County has a large portion, larger than its 1/3 or 1/6, designated to it in the federal funding we receive.
Where did I get me from my recall that you spent approximately $200,000 in Pitt County? Is that correct?
I think he said $20,000, and that's money that we pay on behalf of the family self-sufficiency folks to pay their landlords so they're not evicted while they're trying to get work, to pay their utility bills and things like that, to help stabilize the families so they can focus on getting employment.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. James?
What is the total amount that Community Action spends in Pitt County on daycare and all the other programs that you have?
We can't, we estimated that at $3 million a year of the $6.2 million budget. I think our budget's going to be a little smaller this year, but that's about the proportion. It's almost half goes to Pitt County of the funding we receive, even though we serve two other counties. And that's based on population.
Yes. All right, the next thing, and you told us before, the number of daycare centers, of course, is two, I believe, and then you have a certain, I don't know, how many, 100 and some odd kids that goes out, that you all do pay, I believe, don't you?
Yes, we have four daycare centers in Pitt County, and they serve 252 Head Start families. We serve a whole family, not just the child.
I'm very familiar with Martin Community Action, because I served on that board 25 years ago. But on weatherizing the homes and so forth, this fund is strictly for the elderly. Am I not correct primarily?
It is primarily, I was going to say, it's primarily used on the elderly. It's not strictly for the elderly, in my understanding. There are income criteria. You have to be below 150% of the poverty level in some programs and 200% of the poverty level in some of our other energy efficiency programs.
Some of us are concerned that the other counties would not contribute their share. And we wanted to know if they do not, will all of this money remain in Pitt County to assist the people that here in Pitt County? Because we're using taxpayers' money, and we don't feel like that we need to be subsidizing in other areas, in other counties. What is your answer to that?
Well, my answer is, I think that could be arranged, but without my fiscal guy here, I don't know how complex it would be. But certainly, if that's a condition of receiving the funding, we are not going to object to that at all. And I personally think, when I think about that, it would be wonderful for me to go to Martin County and Beaufort County and say, hey, Pitt County anted up for its citizens, you ought to, too. That might actually give me some leverage as I do that, and I will be doing that. I have every intent of doing that.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo the concern of Commissioner James about subsidizing projects in other counties with Pitt County tax funds, because you talked about the inability, and I understand federal funds are inflexible. And so should the other counties not ante up, will their weatherization projects then freeze with this money remaining here in Pitt County?
I would hope not. I'd be, I'd hope we'd be able to shift the accounting so that we can continue to do weatherization for Pitt County and for the other counties, but I just don't know that. That's why I'd need to talk to my fiscal guy.
If you're given the flexibility in Atlanta that you need, will you still need the $25,000 from us?
They are basically going to suggest that we do what I am doing today, ask for unrestricted funds so that we can do social enterprise. I almost guarantee that's going to be the result of those discussions. The folks in Atlanta and Head Start don't determine how much money they give out. That $200,000 was the sequester from that federal, you know, sequester bill that hit a lot of federal agencies and continues to. They don't have control over that, and they're not going to be able to say, you can have the $200,000 back, or you can allocate it some other way, it's just gone.
I understand, but your current funds that you receive, is there going to be any flexibility given to you? Do you expect any flexibility to come?
No, the Head Start particularly is a very inflexible program. They give us training and technical assistance dollars, and they say you have to spend every penny of it on training and technical assistance. Y'all that have been or have been on our board may recognize that phrase, that the money just can't be shifted anywhere. We have to use it for that, and that's typical of Head Start, it really is.
And I don't really have a problem with the request, as long as it's not going to be something that's going to be recurring every year. But my concern, again, is I don't want to spend Pitt County tax dollars subsidizing other counties shortcomings when we have them as well. I mean, that $25,000 is halfway to the streets we need to pave in the neighborhood. And so those are my concerns there. I would like the dollars and some guarantees that the dollars stay here for projects here, and maybe that can be used as levers to get the other counties to act, because from what I understand, you're not necessarily asking for the same amount from every county.
I haven't asked any of the other counties yet for any specific amount, but I think with that sort of guidance, that might actually help us determine how to approach the other counties with numbers. And that frankly, in my lateness in even submitting this, frankly, is just because of the fact we're both new, me and the fiscal guy. And I had to figure that out first, what do we need before I came and just said, give us some money? And what's it for? You know, what is the need for to help us keep operating and keep helping people? And that's, on the bottom line, what we'd like to do, be able to continue the work we do to help other people.
Well, thank you for your work, Abby Mann, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that I want to thank you, Evan, one of the things that some of you may not know, I served as chairman of that board for eight years. And Martin Community Action has come to the plate for the county, for Pitt County. And we have, they have employed over 50 people. This year, they got about 50 people they've employed in Pitt County. They rehab in Pitt County houses, CSBG's weatherization, about 40 houses. They have also worked with the unprivileged, the low-income people. If nothing else, when you give back to the county, I think that's just reasons, that stands reason why we should do all we can anytime. I'm for any organization, especially nonprofit, that gives back to the citizens of Pitt County, contribute to the economic development of Pitt County. And they purchase their food from the food program here in Pitt County for the daycare. So I think that it's really, it's to our great advantage to support this request. He mentioned that he's going to try to, he's going to talk to the other boards, but when you look at the percentage of people that this organization helped here in Pitt County, it stands for itself. So I urge that the commissioner support this request. $25,000 is little compared to what Martin Community Action does for the citizens of Pitt County. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ward?
Three things. One, when you were saying, I totally agree with these two commissioners relative to if there was money to come from us, I think it needs to stay here in Pitt County in this case. And the other thought I had was, when you are going to the other commissioners, have you thought about going to the municipalities? Because all of the citizens, the municipalities, have their town tax or city taxes, you know, and it might be a small amount, but if you put them all together, you know, that might add to it as far as that help is concerned. The other thing is, the money that you're spending on the employees that are hired in Pitt County and the programs that you have is all federal money, correct?
That's right.
Right.
Well, not entirely, but very yearly.
Well, but I know kind of how that works, but yes, the majority of it.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this is kind of a new request for us, and I know what the federal government has done to the program, and I hate that, and what everybody, the state program and the federal program is doing to Head Start, which is, you know, such an excellent program for preparing our children who need that. But this request for this money is totally new, and it really doesn't go out there. You have to have some money to work with to get things to unfold, and I understand that. But I don't think we can connect this money to the federal money that you get. So my third thought is that we should discuss this more, of course, on Monday when we have our meeting, but I would really like a commitment, because if I were to vote for this on Monday, I would vote for it as long as the money would stay here.
And I'm perfectly willing to make that commitment.
Well, I don't, you know, but I also would like for you to go forward and check with our own municipalities here and their councils and boards and commissioners and see what they would be willing to do, as well as the other counties. Because even if they don't come up with $25,000, if they come up with something, that would give you something to work with in those counties.
I appreciate that advice, and I will follow it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman Garris. I am concerned about how much of this request coming tonight is the county manager knowing full well what's happening here. I'm going to be seeking advice from the county manager, and... I, I'm going to be seeking advice from the county manager, and I hope that this is not new request to the county manager. And so, so I, I trust that you have spoken to the county manager.
Yes, sir. Yes, we had a discussion about this initially before I submitted the written request. In fact, he suggested I submit the written request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Dr. Johnson, we met prior to the June 3 meeting face-to-face, Mr. Lewis came to office, and also when his fiscal director, Michael Irvin.
Michael Irvin, yes, sir.
Irvin came to the June 3 meeting, they also made that request again. Mr. Lewis said he couldn't be here on the 17th, so I suggested he might wanna come tonight, even though it's really not the purpose of tonight's meeting, but it would be a venue to allow him to make his request, the same request that was heard on June 3.
Commissioner Hammond.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of one of our elected personnel that represents our churn in District A of Pitt County, Mr. Moore, who was present tonight. He represents the same area, the same district that I do, and he has, he was recently appointed to serve the citizens of District A on the Pitt County School Board. He's present here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I think we have discussed this pretty fully, and we will take it up on our meeting, our next meeting. What I would suggest, based upon what I've heard from my fellow commissioners, is that you have us some kind of documentation saying that this is gonna be a one-time request just this year, and also that, that money will be used in Pitt County. That's kind of what I've heard from, yes.
Okay, well, I think we did ask Mr. Lewis and staff to fill out the questionnaire that we've used in the past for external agency funding for nonprofits. He did fill it out completely, and he provided a lot of material, a lot of backup material that we've asked in the past of nonprofits, so I'll make this available to the board in your weekly packet.
Okay, good, thank you.
Should I submit something that says that it'll be, only be used to benefit Pitt County citizens in writing?
If I were you, I would do that, based upon what I've heard this evening.
All right.
I would like it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry to interrupt the hearing, which was supposed to be on other matters.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak relative to our budget?
Mr. Chairman, let me also recognize Mary Williams is in the audience with the Pitt County School Board also, along with Mr. Moore, certainly one.
You mean.
Very good. Seeing no one who is interested in speaking on the budget, I now declare the public hearing closed, and the next item on our decision, on our agenda is an item for decision, which is to consider the adoption of the budget ordinance. So I would like to ask my board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving that we can, that we adopt this budget ordinance for the year 13, 14.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Johnson.
Is that stated correctly by my attorney?
My question is, in this proposed ordinance, is the matter of Chamber Commerce membership included?
Yes, sir. It is in this one, yes.
I, I'm very concerned about that, and I cannot vote for it with, with the item of the Chamber of Commerce membership. As liaison from this board to the school board, I heard the school board discuss in detail the issue of whether or not there should be some changes in terms of number of school board members and length of term for school board members, and our elected school board voted not to do that, and the Chamber of Commerce elected to go around the school board to members of the General Assembly and request them to write legislation to make those changes, and therefore I cannot support the, the membership of the chamber. For several years, I personally joined the chamber, paying the membership fee, and I have not done that recently, but I would not now in that the, the chamber has chosen to go against the desire of the school board, as well as legislation was approved by the General Assembly at one point, and the Justice Department turned it down. Now that ought to tell us something. If the Justice Department turned the previous legislation down, then they're likely to turn down any additional request, and therefore I would ask for an amendment to the proposed budget ordinance, removing any membership fee to Chamber of Commerce.
I second the motion, but I want to make a comment.
He said he was suggesting an amendment, so I have to go back to the originator of the motion. Do you accept that amendment?
No, sir. What I would prefer is that we take a vote, and if it passes, and if it doesn't pass, then we could consider the budget without it.
Sure. Or you can, or you can offer substitute motion.
That's exactly right.
Sure.
We will do that.
But that isn't what he said.
No, but.
Okay. So do I, do I?
If he does.
Do I have a substitute motion?
You're gonna have one.
Well, I would, I would make it as a substitute motion then, Mr. Chairman.
That we approve the budget with the exclusion of the, the fees to the Chamber of Commerce?
That's correct.
Now, is that just the Greenville Chamber of Commerce or all of them? Because I believe that this, this motion, the original motion, is including all of the chambers.
That would remove all the.
Okay, all of them, okay, and you're seconding that motion?
I certainly do, and I want to make a comment. I certainly agree with Commissioner Johnson on what he has said. We do not need to use taxpayers' money to fight the people of Pitt County, and what the action that they have taken has costed a great deal of money to the taxpayers here in Pitt County because of the legal fights, and as Commissioner Johnson said, we don't know even still whether they're gonna approve it or not still. So certainly, I think the only way to go is to, to what he has suggested.
Any other comments on the substitute motion or the original motion?
I favor the substitute motion for various different reasons that Dr. Johnson, Mr. James has said.
Okay, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this as brief, but all I heard was that we didn't wanna be a member of the Chamber of Commerce because private citizens dared stand up to elected officials, and who do we think we are? We don't serve ourselves, we serve the people. The chamber is made up of the people. The barometer of everyone I talked to in Pitt County is they do wanna change in the size of the school board, and if we think that the Justice Department isn't gonna approve the current request, then our districts are invalid, and so we're gonna have to redo our board, and those districts have already been approved by the Justice Department. And, and to say that they went around, that how dare a group go around elected officials? We serve them. We don't, they don't serve us. They are the boss. The people are the boss, and I think it's silly that this board is not a member of chambers, saying that this county is open for business. What another board does is up to you, that's fine, but I don't think that we have to rush to defense and pick up a flag of another board because they were offended by a certain group. I think that's wrong. I think this county should appear to be open for business. I think we should engage in the chamber. The chamber does good work, it's done good work for this very board, and I do not support that substitute motion. I believe it's absurd. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
I, I believe that Mr. Webb is using some inflammatory words. He was not a member of this Board of County Commissioners when, when it was established as a nine-person board, and it was established for different reasons than what is being proposed in terms of the school board. And there was a lawsuit, and the Justice Department essentially drew the districts. It was against the desire of the majority of the Board of County Commissioners at the time to redraw the six-person county commissioner board to the current nine-person board, and in fact, the, the six-person county commissioner board traveled to Washington, D.C. to talk with the Justice Department with no success, and Mr. James, you went, and I went.
Certainly did.
And there was no way that the Justice Department was going to consider any alternative for this Board of Commissioners other than what they, the Justice Department was proposing, but it's entirely different than the school board situation, and I believe that the chamber has stepped out of bounds by going against the desire of the majority of the school board in their decision to maintain six-year terms and to maintain 12-person board, and I just believe that, that we need to take a stand with this regard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we're going way back in history. Believe me, this is a different situation, and Commissioner Webb doesn't know what went on. Believe me, he doesn't. When you meet with the Justice Department, and they had an attorney at Reynolds, Mark Rose knows, I know, we met with them all, and when they tell you something, you're gonna do it. Believe me, you are, and so we're talking about two, we're talking about opposite and only, but I just think the chamber should have stayed out of this. It was none of their business, it was the Board of Education, they were trying to, well, I won't go, I'm ready to go.
Mr. Ward, do you have any?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I would not want the citizens or anyone to think that our budget says anything about the size of the school board. It has absolutely nothing in the ordinance about the school board at all, except the amount of money that we're giving to Pitt County schools in our budget. This is an opportunity, I think, for us to show all of the citizens in the county that we support their municipalities and their locations as far as their chambers are concerned, all of them, and what they do for all of our citizens in the county, and that's the reason that I support the original budget ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody's spoken on this that wants to speak, so we need to vote. Now, we vote on the substitute motion first. Do we need to vote by hand or clear that?
If, I don't have the ability to clear that, it appears that Mr. Hammond's voted, so if you will all just press your buttons, that will clear it, if you prefer to do it that way.
Anyway.
And then this vote will not count to anything, any way you want to, just to clear out your voting process system.
Jamie, you have to hit confirm.
You're in all.
Tom. Tom.
This is just to clear your system.
Okay, so now we are voting on the substitute motion that says we approve the budget exclusive of the fees in there for the various chambers. Everybody clear on the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion passes, so our budget stands approved without the payment of the dues to the various chambers. Any other questions about our budget? If not, I will move forward to permission of comments, and Mr. Hammond, I'll start with you.
I don't have any comments, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. James?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Carlson?
None.
Ms. Ward?
No comments except that, I want to reiterate again, I think we had a very successful budget year in the week of the budget workshops, and I wanna thank the finance department and our management area. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Webb?
Only thing I've, I've said previously on more than one occasion that I thought Scott and his staff and the department heads made an overt effort to do what was best for the citizens of this county in the spending of their money, and that's what they did, and I think this vote tonight personifies that to the extent that citizens desire.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson?
I want to say that I'm most appreciative for all the hard work of the county manager. I happen to be up in this building on numerous occasions when the county manager was meeting with the department heads and discussing in detail the proposed budget, and I do believe that the county manager showed extremely good leadership in preparing the budget.
Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna thank the county manager as well for giving the, the employees of Pitt County seeing the need for them to have a 2% raise. I think sometimes we forget our employees, the fine job that they are doing, and certainly thank them for the, the continuous development of such a fine budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll echo the comments of the vice chairman, Mr. Johnson, and Commissioner McGlaughlin about our staff, what they put together, and as well, I think Commissioner Owens told me, you gotta pay the people that do the work, and I was glad we were able to do that this year, and also echo the comments of Ms. Ward from earlier, that the, the other suggestion had nothing to do with the size of the school board, but my particular views on business and how we should look as a county. And one last thing is that we need to contact our senators about Senate Bill 305, that's gonna affect our taxes for tax type, program that we've worked on for eight years, four years prior to my arrival, and it's gonna cost counties $5.5 million, and I also wanted to give some credit to the House of Representatives who have put the education component back in the lottery funds in their version of the budget. It still doesn't come all the way back up, we're still short $1.2 million, but it's a start, and, but again, thanks to the staff for all their very hard work for putting together a very good budget, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. I agree with all the positive comments that have been made about Scott and his staff in putting this budget together. Great job. Do I have a motion? We adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, you did it all.
Yeah, right, let's vote.
He adjourned.
Come on, Gene, get back and vote, so we can go.
I'm bothered, man, doesn't it?
Do it again.
When I stood up, normally that's it.